I'd like to call this January 20th meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, would you call the roll?
Mr. Harper? Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Here. Let the record show that six of our board members are present for tonight's meeting, and we are joined with, by our Division Superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith, our school board attorney, Ms. Nancy Reeves, our clerk, Ms. Carolyn Bowers, along with members of our division leadership team. And we are joined tonight by our student liaison, Sierra Lewis is at the table with us tonight, and our student liaison, Thomas Perry, is also present and in the audience tonight. But at this time, I'll turn things over to Sierra to get us started.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Sorry. Happy New Year, everyone. Tonight, we have my school, Phoebus High School, here to do the invocation. Ms. Takoa Mitchell will come up. Takoa is a student at Phoebus High School, a senior. She also is inside of the Principal Ambassador's Club. She's a varsity cheerleader, English Honor Society, and many other activities at Phoebus. Takoa, you can lead us in the pledge.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. At Phoebus High School, we strive to use every minute of the day to show our greatness. With this in mind, I choose to read the following perspective on finding your individual greatness. Somehow, we've come to believe that greatness is only for the chosen few, for the superstars. The truth is greatness is for us all. This is not about lowering expectations, it's about raising the bar for everyone. Greatness is not in one special place, and it's not in one special person. Greatness is wherever somebody is trying to find it. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you come back up? We just want to ask you a couple of questions. We're not going to let you off that quickly. Thank you very much for those inspiring words tonight. Do you have anyone in the audience with you?
Well, I did bring my principal and my fellow student ambassador, Morgan.
Stand and let us. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Plans after high school?
Oh, I plan to go to college.
Great.
I'm kind of stuck between two schools right now.
It's good to have choices.
Of course.
All right. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Keep us posted. Thanks so much for being with us tonight. We'll move on tonight to our recognitions, and at this time, I'll call on Ms. Diana Gallata, our Executive Director of Marketing and Public Relations, and she'll be assisted tonight by school board member, Mr. Joe Kilgore.
Good evening. First, I would like to ask Larry Price, who is the Division President of Marketing for Synergistic, to come forward to make a special presentation to our division.
Good evening. My name is Larry Price again. I am the Regional President for Marketing for Synergistic. You've had an energy conservation program going on in your school division since 2013, and you have significantly reduced the energy being consumed in your school district. Your program delivers an environmentally significant benefit from a reduced carbon footprint. Energy not used prevents the emission of carbon dioxide, sulfur dioxide, and nitrogen oxides. Synergistic is pleased to be your partner in this program, and your partner in reducing the energy used by your school division. Tonight, I'm delighted to present the Environmental Excellence Award to Hampton City Schools. The Environmental Excellence Award is an environmentally focused award to recognize the impact the organization's energy program is having on the conservation of our natural resources. It focuses on the environmental equivalent of the reduction in energy consumption attained by the program, and recognizes the support and cooperation of the administration, faculty, and the staff. The program delivers an environmental benefit from a reduced carbon footprint. Energy not used prevents the emission of carbon dioxide. In the first 26 months of your program, Hampton City Schools reduced its energy consumption by 61 million BTUs. The prevention of emission of the equivalent of 6,978 metric tons of carbon dioxide emissions. That's equivalent to 1,454 cars taken off the road for a year, or the planting of 178,000 trees that are now 10 years old. Reducing your energy consumption by 61 million BTUs has resulted in an 18% reduction in consumption in your school division. Ms. Suzanne Scott, Mr. Tom Sawyer, along with your energy specialists that are onstage with me, John Cobra Lee and Philip Malio, have provided amazing leadership in reducing the energy consumption in this school division, and we're proud to partner with you and are grateful for the opportunity to present the Environmental Excellence Award tonight. So, I'm going to present the award to Mr. Kilgore. And we have a replica that this much reduction is equivalent to about $1.7 million in expenditures for energy that you would have had to spend to continue at the level of consumption that you had back in 2013. So, I want to present this to the guys who helped save the money, and I want to congratulate all of you for such a great job. It's a pleasure being here.
Just real quick, Mr. Price, I'd like to, again, thank you for your leadership and for this award, and then for the guys that have the intimate familiarity with our facilities. That's the way that we obtain this, is one percent at a time, and I know that you guys are very familiar with our facilities, and that's how we achieve this award. So, again, thank you for your hard work, too.
It is now my pleasure to recognize Connor Dunn, a technology teacher at Sims Middle School, for earning up to $100,000 in the Fab School Lab Science Classroom Makeover Contest. Northrop Grumman Foundation recently announced that Hampton's Benjamin Sims Middle School is one of five middle schools in the entire nation, and only one of two in Virginia who will receive the grant. Connor Dunn submitted the application for the available grants, up to $100,000 each. He was assisted by Whitney Cutledge, Debbie Russell, and David Hotler, who I think are here in the audience tonight. After making it to the semifinals along with 19 other public middle schools, the five winning schools, including Sims, were chosen based on a final review conducted by the Fab School Labs team to assess how each school's desired dream STEM lab would allow for new teaching methods and lesson plans to be implemented, course objectives suitability, overall feasibility, and the expressed public support received by each school during the five-day online voting campaign hosted by the Fab School Labs Facebook page that generated 45,500 votes. We are so excited about the future Fab Lab at Sims Middle School, and we congratulate Mr. Dunn for this outstanding accomplishment. I believe your principal's here as well. Mr. Blunt? Would you please stand?
Mr. Dunn, it is indeed my pleasure to present you this Certificate of Achievement. It reads, "Congratulations from the Hampton City School Board, Connor Dunn, Sims Middle School, Northrop Grumman Foundation, Fab Lab Grant." It is signed by our Chairman Martha Mugler and our Superintendent, Dr. Smith. Congratulations, outstanding. Thank you for everyone that voted, over 45,000, that's pretty amazing. We absolutely look forward to hearing from you in the future about what amazing things you can do in the lab now, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I think it's of note that when Dr. Smith went to Connor's classroom and let him know that he was one of the winners of the $100,000, the first thing he said was, "I can't wait to tell my mom." So, we were pretty touched by that. A lot of people in the community love that. Okay, and last but not least, the Hampton High School football team, under the direction of Coach Mike Smith, won its 800th, I repeat, 800th football game in the history of the school this football season. The win came when Hampton High defeated Demby High 38-0 on September 3 at Todd Stadium in Newport News. Coach Smith, would you please come forward, along with members of your team, so that we can recognize you? While they're coming up, I'm going to explain what a great accomplishment this is. Hampton High School is one of only 10 high school football teams in the nation to reach 800 wins. The Hampton High Football Program, I'll just wait for you all to get situated, because I don't want anyone to miss any of this. As I said a second ago, Hampton High is one of only 10 high school football teams in the nation to reach 800 wins. The Hampton High Football Program claimed its first win in 1899 against Old Point Comfort College. The win came after Old Point refused to play due to a dispute over a play. Hampton High won the game by forfeit. Since then, Hampton High Football Team has risen to great glory. Hampton High School has won a Virginia High School League record, 17 championships, four of them consecutive, from '95 to '98. I must note that half of the 800 wins were coached by our current coach, Mike Smith. Coach Smith won his 400th game in 2008. He is considered by many as one of the best high school football coaches in the nation. Our talented high school football teams have included world famous players such as Chris Hamburger, Michael Huestead, Dick Cornell, Elton Brown, Dwight Stevenson, Robert Banks, Tyrod Taylor, who I heard was in town just last night, and Ronald Curry. Our players have gone on to receive full athletic scholarships, played in the National Football League, and some have been inducted into the National Football League Hall of Fame. This year, the Hampton Crabbers Football Team finished the season with a record of 12-1. They were the Peninsula District Champions, and went on to win two games in the 5A South Region Tournament before being stopped by Indian River High School. Two members of the team were named to the 5A VHSL State Team. They are Daz Newsome and Javon Quillen. Before we make this recognition, I also want to point out that Beth Mara, Athletic Coordinator, is here, Kevin Davis, and Tiffany Hardy, the principals for Hampton High are here. Is Michael Treves here? Wrestling, okay. So, it is our great honor to present Coach Mike Smith and his team with this award.
I can't say, it's not often I'm on the stage where I'm not the tallest one, so, very impressive. It is my honor to present this Certificate of Achievement, and congratulations from the Hampton City School Board to the Hampton's High School Varsity Football Team with its 800th win, signed by our Chairman Martha Mugler and our Superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith. Congratulations, Mike.
I'd like to recognize, over to my left here, Kenny Gilliam and Woodrow Wilson, who were two assistant coaches. The other one was Danny Mitchell, who'd been with me forever. He was under the weather and didn't make it, but Kenny Woodrow played on the first state championship football team I coached in 1975, many years ago. But, this was a good year, great group of guys, got some good ones coming back. And I would like to extend a thank you to Mr. Kevin Davis, Ms. Tiffany Hardy, for, they've been really, really supportive of us the last couple of years since they've been there. They've been great administrators, so, we'd like to thank them, and I guess if I spoke to one other, it would be Bubba Quillen down there, quarterback, a little under the gun in the last game, had a separated shoulder slightly, and didn't tell anybody, but you couldn't stop him anyhow, so, but thank you, guys, you did a great job, and thank you for your support, principals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gallata, and congratulations again to Mike Smith and the Crabbers on that awesome accomplishment. My father was Hampton Crabber football player back when I think they wore leather helmets in the 1940s, and so, holds special place in my heart. So, congratulations again to you all, and also congratulations to Connor Dunn and the group that helped put all that work together for that grant. Very exciting stuff, and we're really looking forward to the outcomes that are the result of having such a great lab space to work in. And again, thanks to Synergistics, I think that gentleman has slipped out of the room, but congratulations also to our staff on really embracing the work that it took to garner such a large amount of savings in just 26 months, so, congratulations and thanks to everyone. We'll move on now to our consent agenda, which consists of Personnel Report 15-23 and a series of field trips. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Henry that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I can't hear. Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on tonight to our superintendent and staff reports, I will turn things over at this time to our Superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll start, as noted there, on the agenda with the Look, Listen, and Learn Report to the Board and community, and so, I'll go down, so, I can speak directly to the Board and share this information. I think we're going to hold the PowerPoint up so that we can... While we're getting ready, really, with the PowerPoint, let me start by saying, Madam Chair and members of the school board, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity, really, to present to you and members of the community, the Superintendent's Look, Listen, and Learn Report. It is a report to the school board, also to the members of the community at large. As you will recall, in August of 2015, and it's difficult to believe that, it has been six months, but in August of 2015, I provided you with a framework for really engaging our stakeholders in what I consider to be a deliberate process as a means of understanding, defining, and also expanding the culture of teaching and learning in Hampton. This deliberate process and thought in terms of moving forward really was characterized as the Look, Listen, and Learn Report of the superintendent, and we started certainly with the tour. And so, I'd like to share information with you this evening as it relates to the findings in regards to the Look, Listen, and Learn Tour of the superintendent. As you'll recall, I use the new strategic plan as the backdrop, and certainly the framework for the Look, Listen, and Learn Tour, and this evening, I am delighted to share my observations, future opportunities, as well as some of the initial actions I have taken during my first six months as your new superintendent. So, in addition, let me highlight, in addition to the PowerPoint, you also should have on Board Docs the full report, and I think you also had a paper copy of the Look, Listen, and Learn Report. And so, with that serving as our backdrop, I'd like to move forward with the report. I'd like to start off with Nelson Mandela as a starting point for the Look, Listen, and Learn Report, where he once said, "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to really change the world." And so, as we talk about this particular report, I think it gives then and provides some context as it relates to this important work of teaching and learning our core business, and focusing on the outcomes as it relates to student achievement, and we realize that as a result of student achievement, we want to make certain that our students are college, career, and life-ready, and as a result of that, certainly, all of our schools fully accredited. But again, that's focusing on what I would consider to be our core business, and so, I think Nelson Mandela really provided us with a good backdrop in terms of this particular quote, and realizing the importance of our work. So, I thought we'd start with Nelson Mandela. The next slide, we have the goals of the Superintendent's Look, Listen, and Learn Tour, and I will certainly not spend a lot of time here, but just really to highlight that when we started this tour, as I shared with the Board in August of 2015, six months ago, that I felt that as the new superintendent, it would really create opportunities for me to listen and to engage all of the stakeholders, as many as possible, in this process, to also provide a framework for a smooth transition of leadership from one superintendent to the next, and then to really look at the division and really focus on strategic actions that we could take, and certainly embed into the new strategic plan. And so, we started with what, as a part of it, the Superintendent's Look, Listen, and Learn Tour, we had four essential questions, and so, throughout all of the opportunities that were afforded, I had the opportunity to engage stakeholders with these four questions, and they were provided an opportunity to share and to provide feedback aside from this, but at least we use this as the foundation in terms of engaging the stakeholders. And so, the four questions are there. You are familiar with these four questions that we have used along the way as a part of the Superintendent's Look, Listen, and Learn Tour. But again, we really focused and wanted people to share with us, and certainly with me, where they would like to see Hampton City Schools in the next three years, and some of the initiatives that we currently have in place that they believed would help us to get there, and what are some of the challenges, and then, from that particular point, we ask individuals to share with us ways in which they might become involved as we move forward. I'm happy to report this evening to the Board and members of the community at large that we engaged over 1,000 stakeholders. Amazing, in terms of the number of stakeholders who have been involved in terms of the Superintendent's Look, Listen, and Learn Tour. And so, it was a pleasure to meet over 1,000 stakeholders in this six-month period, and so, we'll see whether or not we will be able to meet another 1,000 in the next six months. But I'm delighted to report this to the Board and to the community. And so, you will note on pages 20 and 21, I have provided you with really a comprehensive list of the various stakeholder groups that I met with, but here, I really just highlighted in terms of school board and certainly staff members of our school division, the PTA Council, and the list continues there with city and state leaders, community groups, civic and business leaders, as well as higher education. And so, you have a comprehensive list on pages 20 and 21. So, I want to start with the Look, Listen, and Learn Tour of the superintendent, and start with the first key goal area, because we know that there are six goals with the new strategic plan of 2016 through 2020, 2020. And so, the first goal area, maximize every child's learning. The key goals are listed there, and so, without reading them to you, you're familiar with the key goals of this major goal area of maximize every child's learning. And so, let me share with you my observations as the new superintendent, within the context of maximize every child's learning. My observations were, as listed here, that stakeholders expressed a clear desire for the items that are listed there. These four: increased student achievement, emphasis on academic excellence, attaining fully accredited schools, and certainly ensuring that our school division become a school division of choice as it relates to our students and staff members. And so, again, these are observations within the major goal area of maximize every child's learning. And you'll note additional information that I have provided you in the full report on page three of the report, and so, additional information, if you'll just turn to page three. Rather than providing you with a paragraph and breaking all of the PowerPoint rules, I thought that I would just stick with the key points. I'm sure business teachers would appreciate that, my wife in particular, and to share with you in greater detail on page three of the report in terms of observations. I really did not want to leave anything up for interpretation, but rather to provide you with a comprehensive, detailed overview of those observations, and here, you have, in essence, really just some highlights of the observations in the area of maximize every child's learning. We'll move forward, and what are some of the opportunities that, as a part of the Look, Listen, and Learn Tour of the superintendent? The opportunities are listed. First of all, when we examine the opportunities, I would encourage you to look first at ensure that we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum. That's the foundation of our core business, and recognizing that when we engage the human resources, our teachers and all of our staff members, and we focus on the mission of the school division, the roadmap for us on a daily basis, aside from the strategic plan, we provide teachers and those persons who engage our young people in the learning process, that teaching and learning, it starts with a guaranteed viable curriculum. And I've highlighted in terms of when we say guaranteed and viable curriculum, and I'm not sure if you can press the button there, and maybe it will come back up, because I'm not standing there. And so, when we talk about guaranteed and viable curriculum, when we say an opportunity for us, we want to make certain that we've unpacked the standards, that all students have certainly access to the learning in terms of essential content, that we have embedded in the curriculum, high-yield strategies that are embedded, sufficient time. We want to make certain that we have provided sufficient time for that teaching and learning, and for students to develop the content in terms of their knowledge, and that they know what's expected in terms of what they should be able to know, do, and certainly understand as a part of the teaching and learning process there. as a part of the teaching and learning process there. And the others listed in terms of guaranteed and viable curriculum, where we have additional authentic learning opportunities provided for students who may need more time to master, but to make certain that that's embedded within our curriculum along with authentic assessments where we have unpacked the standards, we want to make certain that we're assessing at that same cognitive level in terms of the curriculum. So if the curriculum ultimately resides in terms of a cognitive level here, we want to make certain that we're also assessing the students at that same level in terms of making certain that we have a good handle on student mastery of what they're expected to know. Maximize can, again, we continue with maximize every child's learning when we look at opportunities, ensure alignment of the lesson design and delivery with the curriculum, and enhance our alignment of assessment program with the curriculum, and we've talked about that. Additional opportunities, certainly to create a literacy program from birth to post-secondary, that's important, and we know the importance of literacy and starting early, and I've provided you with some research that we've highlighted as a part of the report. And so we know the importance of literacy, and I think it's important for us to start in terms of from birth to post-secondary. And so if you look at pages five and six, we have highlighted information regarding that, and in particular, information relative to the research as it relates to looking at a literacy program and enhancing what we do relative to our literacy program from birth to post-secondary. So I would just ask that you focus your attention there. In addition, create academic portraits of high school, of students of Hampton City Schools, fifth grade, eighth grade, and twelfth grade. In essence, what we're saying, what students, what we want students to know, to understand, and to be able to do. And so when you're in fifth grade, what is that expectation? And so a portrait of a Hampton City School in fifth grade, eighth grade, and twelfth grade. And I think in the report, you will note that I said it then will take away what we consider to be the randomness of saying what we expect students to know and to understand and to be able to do, and so that's an opportunity for us. And also to expand our dual enrollment and industry certification programs, we have a strong dual enrollment and industry certification programs that are in place, but how we might go forth in terms of expanding and enriching those opportunities for young people, in particular, as we focus on college, career, and life-ready. And I want to make an important point here, and that is to recognize that when we are talking about opportunities, we're talking really about building from places of strength, recognizing the good work already in place and the commitment that exists and how we might go forth and build from those places of strength. And to also, an opportunity for us to transform teaching and learning via the academy programs that we currently have in place. And later, you will talk about the forward, next-generation learning, and that is a wonderful opportunity. And as we all know, we've heard a lot from our community, and so that's a very clear observation, but also an opportunity as we go forward. Other opportunities in the area of maximize every child's learning, create an intense accreditation plan of action for our schools. I have met with our deputy superintendent, Dr. Cagiano, and members of the executive leadership team to really talk about our current reality, where we reside, and our desired state, and our accreditation. And so we've been able to really, we have examined our current reality and have recommendations going forward as to how we might enhance in areas of other resources and professional development as we look toward all of our schools certainly being fully accredited. And also to formulate a plan of action to address on-time graduation. I do know that we have a on-time graduation symposium that's coming up within the next week, and so we will continue that conversation and dialogue with members of the team. We have a number of agencies that have been invited, members of those agencies will be present, and we will ask for their participation and involvement as members of the community as we focus our attention on on-time graduation. Want to go back and talk about the academies because we know that when we have relevance for learning and students have those opportunities to make connections and moving in the direction of transforming our high schools where students will spend time in the classroom and also mentorships and internships outside of the classroom, all of those things are very important when we talk about on-time graduation and making those connections and helping young people to make those connections. Let's move to the next area in terms of create safe nurturing environments. You know, and you're familiar with the key goals there, and so I will certainly not spend time with those key goal areas, but to examine the observations, stakeholders express clear desire for defining safe nurturing environments for Hampton City Schools, to make certain that we define the culture of safe and nurturing environments for our school division. And so what's then meant by safe nurturing environments when we say Hampton City Schools? And to define that and to ensure that throughout the division that we all have that same working knowledge and definition as it relates to safe nurturing environments and the same practices. And then again, as I mentioned, ensuring consistency in our focus and the practices in going forward. So opportunities, that was, those were the observations, so opportunities certainly for us to define the nurturing environment, safe nurturing environments, and to expand our written protocols so that throughout the division, we have one set of protocols, and we all understand those protocols, and we provide the professional development relative to the protocols and the working knowledge and definition that we have for Hampton City Schools. And so with that in mind, for create safe nurturing environments, the opportunity exists for us to develop a five-year professional development program based upon our working definition and outside of our working definition, the practices and the protocols that we have in place. And we want to expand the implementation. I believe that that's an opportunity of the positive interventions and supports our PBIS program so that we have consistency throughout the division. We know that we have models of excellence in our division with PBIS. And so it's a matter of taking the excellent work that currently reside in our division and then making certain that throughout the division, we take those practices and that we really embed them and have consistency throughout our division, and we maximize the good work already in place. We continue with opportunities in terms of create a safe nurturing environment, in terms of create a model of excellence for facilities, grounds, and maintenance. I shared that information with the board certainly a month ago in terms of our PRIDE initiative, and so we will continue that work through PRIDE as we focus on partnering responsibly in delivering excellence. And we look at our custodial services, we also look at grounds and maintenance and have a collective effort and energy in terms of our focus with our facilities, grounds, and maintenance. Attract, develop, and retain exceptional staff, and we're familiar with the key goals, and so I will not spend time there because you're familiar with those goals in terms of the strategic plan. But the observations of the superintendent, stakeholders expressed an appreciation for great staff, and that has certainly been very clear in terms of the schools that I have had an opportunity to visit and the staff members, that we have a great staff in terms, when we look at members of the senior leadership team, school board office, and also in our schools. And so throughout my observations, I heard that on very much a regular basis about a great staff, and so it's a great starting place for us, and I'm delighted to be able to join a wonderful team. And that we have exceptional programs in place in terms of support for students who are having difficulty to that of enrichment and how we enhance, and so exceptional programs that are in place. And then meaningful professional learning opportunities really was highlighted in terms of observations from stakeholders and as well as my personal observation or observations. Opportunities for us as we examine, attract, and develop and retain an exceptional staff to ensure that we have regional compensation competitiveness, and you will talk about that this evening in terms of compensation study and where we reside, and certainly to make certain that we are able to benchmark ourselves against neighboring school divisions, understand where we reside and where we would like to be as we focus on compensating staff members. And you have that on your radar, and certainly I share and support that as superintendent, and I think the community certainly shared that information during the community priorities workshop. And then to develop and deliver a five-year professional development plan. Again, when we look at where we would like to be as we focus on our curriculum, our instructional lesson design and delivery, the authentic assessments, to ensure that we have a five-year professional development plan aligned with our curriculum, the assessment program, and our lesson design and delivery program as well, and to make certain that all of those pieces are connected. And so I've had some wonderful conversations with our staff members regarding a five-year professional development plan. Maintain effective and efficient innovative support systems. Observations, a commitment to the overall mission of Hampton City Schools, that has been a very clear observation. Ensure that the work is connected in purposeful, in a purposeful manner, has been a clear observation, and that we have strong academic data system or systems that are in place. We have a very robust data system in place, and we should feel good about the data system that we have relative to our academic data system that we have. What are some of the opportunities for us then as we examine, maintain effective, efficient, and innovative support systems? We want to ensure a systems approach. That's very important, and we want to expand and ensure meaningful partnerships. And so when we look at our academies and we talk about mentorships and internships, that those partnerships are meaningful, meaningful for the school division and also meaningful for those partners. One of the things I think that down the road that legislators may find themselves considering, given the governor's most recent remarks regarding transforming high schools and those opportunities that reside, we may find ourselves where legislators may certainly desire to look at opportunities of how to get partners connected and to strengthen those partnerships, whether or not they have certain incentive programs in place for business owners who will partner with pre-K through twelve school divisions and so forth, in particular as we move toward the future. I have a lot of information in there in terms of my thoughts regarding a systems approach. And for the sake of time, as superintendent, I will not highlight all of that information, but you have a lot of information relative to systems approach, what I believe are the essential components for a systems approach and the value-added piece as it relates to a systems approach. And I have shared that with our staff in multiple settings as we continue to go forward and to really examine, to ensure that we have a systems approach as we go forward. Other observations, as we look at enhanced family and community engagement and satisfaction, some of the observations there, there was expressed, an interest expressed in terms of a commitment to student success, that overall, we want students to do well and to perform well and to achieve. And so that's a valuable piece as we go forward, but also as we look at another observation, demonstrated a desire to be meaningfully engaged in the work. So stakeholders said, "We want to be engaged, but we want to be engaged in meaningful ways, and how best can we accomplish that as a school division?" And so what are some of the opportunities? We want to ensure families and community members are connected to the real work in meaningful ways, and we want to create and implement, I think, a five-year family and community engagement plan. And you will hear me often talk about five-year plans because I think when we talk about five-year plans, we look at our current reality, and then we start to project where we would like to be next year and the following year and the following year. And then we take into account a Plan Do Study Act that we put into motion, those action steps that we come back, we evaluate whether or not it's working, we continue the work, and then we come back and we reexamine, and we make adjustments along the way. But I think it's important for us to look at that whole continuum in terms of where we would like to be in the next five years in these areas. Manage our fiscal resources effectively and efficiently in terms of observations of the superintendent, new superintendent. We have an excellent system of checks and balances, and I say this, certainly I've had the opportunity to work in multiple school divisions, and so I say that in terms of we have an excellent system of checks and balances. We have a strong business, we have strong business practices to support the mission of Hampton City Schools. What are some of the opportunities that reside there? And those opportunities, you have them, and they may not come back up, but increase vertical discussions and expand outcome-based budgeting. And so we want to make certain that we increase our vertical discussions, that we aren't having just the, what I consider to be those horizontal discussions, but also the vertical discussions, and we are able to make those connections. Our work then, it is connected to the mission of the school division in this way, and to have those vertical discussions and to expand them. Some of the superintendent's initial actions, I'm happy to report that I have not spent time just looking, listening, and all of that as a part of the looking and the listening and all of that has been involved with that particular part of the process, but I'm also happy to share with you that I've been able to take some strategic action along the way beyond the Look, Listen, and the Learn piece of the tour. And so I have been engaged in school visits, strategic leadership focus. I have had an opportunity to meet with members of the leadership team and to talk about strategic leadership focus. We have focused our efforts on pyramid of interventions for our schools, for school support. You have already been engaged in that discussion. We have created curriculum forecasting documents. I have provided superintendent success indicator meetings every other week, and so we're meeting with our deputy superintendent of curriculum and instruction and executive directors. Curriculum auditing process, we have engaged in that work, literacy for all. We have begun the process of looking in terms of involvement of community members, in particular with those discussions and with, at this particular point, members of our team as to what a birth-to-post-secondary literacy initiative might look like for Hampton City Schools. Of course, we have met with community partners, and we have examined our dual enrollment program. We've talked about our on-time graduation, the current initiatives that are in place and where we're headed, and we've engaged other stakeholders in that conversation. And so the planning process is moving forward as to how we might continue to engage in that work in a strategic way. I've certainly been engaged in the academy planning process. We shared with you the PRIDE, the systems approach, the budget development criteria based upon the new strategic plan, and also as a part of meeting with our instructional leaders, I've shared with them what I consider to be the superintendent's eight and shared with the school board, the superintendent's focus as it relates to the strategic plan. And so Henry Ford said this, we started off with Nelson Mandela, I think I'll end with Henry Ford, who said, "Coming together is the beginning. Keeping together is progress. Working together is certainly success." Working together is certainly success." And so, Madam Chair, members of the board, I thank you for the opportunity to share with you the superintendent's report in terms of the look, listen, and learn report to you as members of the board, but also to the community at large. And I'm also delighted to share with you that I'm honored to serve as the 21st Superintendent of Hampton City Public Schools. And I look forward to the journey and the opportunities and the challenges that are ahead for us as we engage in this purposeful work on behalf of the young people that we serve. Certainly, we want to make certain, I want to make certain, along with you as members of the board, that they are college, career, and life-ready. So, thank you for the opportunity to share. And I apologize for the time, but 21 pages, I couldn't get beyond that.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, for such a thorough report back to the board. And at this time, I will defer to questions or comments from my fellow board members. If anyone has anything for Dr. Smith? Your report was obviously extremely thorough.
We just wonder what he's been doing for the six months.
I don't wonder. The evidence is in the pages and the delivery of this message tonight. I'll comment on one particular component that I'm pretty excited about. I've had the opportunity to have a conversation, Dr. Smith, recently, a little bit at length about the curriculum and assessment alignment. And I think that is just a really critical piece to moving us forward. I'm very excited about identifying that and the work that's going to take place in that particular arena. And I believe that will lead to some tremendous student success rates and achievement.
Absolutely.
Other comments or questions from board members?
I guess I feel almost compelled to say this. Sometimes, the community hears this report, and we have a copy here in front of us. But I think that it's important to say that over this six-month process of transition, I'm quite sure that every board member and every member of your division leadership team has had an opportunity, several opportunities, to talk with you and observe you, travel with you, be with you. So, we know that some of these initiatives are already in place. So, thanks to you and your way of, your leadership style, we know some of the things that have been accomplished. And we feel really optimistic that we're going to see much success in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
I'll come back up, Madam Chair.
Come back up. And we'll move on to your next report.
We'll move to the next report. And the next report is that of Career Academy Update.
Good evening, Mrs. Mugler, Mr. Pearson, school board members, and Hampton community. We have an important question before us. How do we prepare 100% of our students to graduate college, career, and life-ready? As Dr. Smith shared in his presentation, Henry Ford said, "Coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress. And working together is success." And we plan to talk about success this evening. I'd like to share our plan to make Henry Ford's words come alive through our strategic plan and a partnership with Ford Next Generation Learning by working with our unique, resource-rich community to prepare our students to meet the challenges that await the next generation of learners. Through strong community support, we have a strategic plan that outlines how we achieve our mission and responds to this question, ensuring our high school students learn and grow through our college and career academies. We are positioned to achieve our mission and a strategic vision and plan to support it. Working together with our community, parents, and business partners, we can achieve new levels of excellence based on college and career academies. This evening, the framework to expand our academies and move our students, our school district, and our community to higher levels of excellence and effectiveness based on community-driven innovation transformation model will be highlighted. We are proud of our current academies of Hampton in our four high schools. Hampton High School's Aerospace and Information Technology Academy, which is part of the Greater Peninsula Governor STEM Academy. It offers pathways in aerospace, business information management, and information technology. We collaborate with phenomenal partners such as NASA Langley Research Center, Langley Air Force Base, and a variety of aerospace and research companies to benefit our students and staff. Keketan High School's Architecture and Applied Arts Governor STEM Academy provides our students with competencies necessary for success in architecture, construction, engineering, graphic design, and merchandising. In Bethel High School's Governor's Health Sciences Academy, students build a foundation of the medical knowledge, skills, and experiences that help them make informed decisions to pursue education, training, and licensing in healthcare and related careers. And in Phibus High School's Information Design and Engineering Academy, students are provided the best information and experiences to prepare them for the 21st century careers in engineering, information technology, and media technology preparation. For many of our parents, students, staff, and community, the positive outcomes from the existing career academies has helped to inform the question relative to how we graduate 100% of our students ready for college, career, and life. We want to build upon this excellence by expanding the academy concept. Our community has shown great interest in the Career Academy data, which indicate academy students are highly engaged in their learning, which is reflected in increased attendance, grade point averages, industry credentials, and matriculating from high school with solid post-secondary plans. It's that hands-on work that helps us with this. We have listened, as our community shared in the Community Priorities Workshop, the need to transform our high schools into smaller learning communities centered around college and career themes. Through our extensive research for the most effective proven framework to transform our high schools to prepare students, we discovered the work being done by Ford Next Generation Learning. This unique and comprehensive community initiative brings together educators, employers, and community leaders to improve schools and ultimately, the workforce in Hampton Roads. It was vital that our community had input as we began the exploration stage with Ford Next Generation Learning this past April to determine if the framework was a good fit for Hampton. We held a two-day event, many of you attended, which allowed members of our community to learn about Ford, and it provided Ford an opportunity to learn about Hampton and our four high schools. They toured our schools and our students were very, very impressive. Superintendent buy-in was important. And Dr. Smith was able to discuss the potential relationship with Ford through a conference call in June, even before he started. Teacher leaders and administrators were able to learn about Career Academy transformation during an August training. Meetings with our community partners have revealed a large interest in partnership opportunities. For example, Chief Salt has expressed an interest in developing an academy of law and public safety. Langley Air Force Base is interested in working with us on STEM pathways. Our legacy of first from the sea, first to the stars will live on as we strengthen our pathways for careers in aquaculture production, expansion, and development of new products for wild and aquaculture seafood, business, marketing, and engineering with Dr. Michael Jenke and other researchers right here at the Virginia Seafood Agricultural Research and Extension Center in Hampton. Our community is excited about the opportunities ahead. We will transform the secondary school experience by building on our collaborative culture, providing students with relevant, engaging learning experiences whereby they will apply their learning to real-world challenges created in partnerships with our businesses, industry, and community partners. We'll build on the great progress we've experienced with our current academies based on the tremendous expertise of our stakeholders across our community to truly transform learning to prepare students for college, careers, and life, as well as ignite their passion for learning that will remain with them throughout their lives. Our strategic plan and the Ford Next Generation roadmap outlines where we are headed over the next three to five years. In this process, everyone has a voice and the responsibility in educating our children, transcending Hampton City Schools to community ownership of educating children and a new accountability structure around the master plan for this work. We are currently in the second phase of visioning with our community. As we move into full implementation over the next three years, we are confident, as Dr. Smith shared earlier, that we will be a model community for the Commonwealth as well as the nation, based on our rich capacity and the interest this community has shown in college and career academies. Our students and community will benefit greatly from this transformational work. We know that a quality education provides every student with the opportunity to be successful in this global economy. The academies will be designed around career themes and pathways that are prevalent in our community, such as finance, hospitality, and tourism. These smaller learning communities provide a supportive, personalized environment with relevant teaching and learning, real-world applications and internships to ensure our students graduate prepared for the college and careers that are out there. Based on dual credit, students will get a head start on college, making it more affordable. And with industry credentials, our students will be work-ready. Another positive attribute of living in Hampton is our rich volunteer community, in which we build on the invaluable social capital by providing mentors for our students. We will increase students' marketability by providing work-based learning and career exploration activities through partnerships with local employers. The work-based learning experiences will further develop our students' 21st century skills, increasing their marketability as well as strengthening our community's pipeline. Based on the academies, our students will know what it takes to secure jobs in high-wage, high-demand fields. Our strategic plan and the affiliation with Ford Next Generation Learning takes a major step this evening as the board signs a resolution. Our next steps include working with Ford to assess our strengths and challenges using a rubric that they have called the Attributes Rubric. In April, we will begin the master planning process with our community. And next fall, we would like to pilot ninth-grade success academies in each high school. Our students and families will continue to refine the academic and career plans, which are initiated in the seventh grade using tools and resources, including Navient's Family Connection. We are excited about connecting our schools, staff, business, and parents together to benefit our students and community. This community-based approach will ensure a quality education based on real-world skills combined with hands-on learning, and it answers the question, "How do we graduate 100% of our students college, career, and life-ready?" Henry Ford said it. It's about working together. We thank the board for your hard work, your leadership in engaging our community, for a brighter future for our children with this innovative model. Working together is success. So, I thank you for your time this evening and be happy to answer any questions. I know we presented in depth on this previously, but are there any additional follow-up questions?
Thank you, Dr. Woods. And we will be voting on the resolution shortly, a little bit later in this meeting. Are there questions or comments from board members for Dr. Woods at this time?
I have a comment. I would just like to say that I'm very excited about the community involvement that this, all of the plans involve, you know, involve. And I would just like to say that I love the approach that Dr. Smith said about not just having horizontal leadership, but also vertical leadership, because it is affecting other people other than who is making the decision. So, I just would like to encourage us all to continue to have a community involvement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Woods? All right. Thank you so much for your report tonight. Dr. Smith?
Yes, we will continue with Ms. Ruth, who will share with members of the board proposed compensation study and...
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am before you this evening to review with you the, or provide you with an update on the formal compensation study that we are planning to implement in the very near future. And just as a background, the last time that Hampton City Schools conducted a formal compensation study is in the 1990s. So, it has been quite a while since we've conducted a formal. We certainly have done them, internal ones, every year, but this will be a very extensive This evening, we have focused a lot of our attention on the strategic plan, obviously in both Dr. Smith's report about the Look, Listen, and Learn Tour, and also as we hear about the progress on our career academies. And the report that you're about to hear on the compensation study is no exception. The ability to attract, develop, and retain exceptional staff is critical to our core business of teaching and learning. If we don't have strong teachers in the classroom, then we are not going to be able to achieve the learning goals that we have for our students. And similarly, competitive compensation is critical to our ability to attract and retain those quality teachers. The importance of that is reflected in one of our key initiatives from the strategic plan, that we want to maintain a competitive salary and benefits package for all of our employees. We've done a great job the last several years when it comes to our benefits package with the addition of the pharmacy and the wellness center. We have not been able to focus on our compensation the way that we would like to, and so that will be our focus for this year. And it is, it's an item certainly that we have discussed with the board since probably October, I believe, is when some discussions started around the possibility of doing a compensation study. And we are very glad to see that our community members also found compensation to be a priority. In fact, as Ms. Vane shared with us a couple of months ago, it came up as one of their top three in terms of having competitive employee compensation and expanded benefits. So, before we talk about the study itself, I want to share with you a little bit about our current status. our current status and why this study is so important. Both our teacher scale and our general scale lag the market. In other words, our pay, if you were just to put pay side-by-side with other school districts and/or other employers, our pay ranges are lower than our competitors. Voluntary turnover has increased, it increased to 7.5% for the 14, 15 school year. And of the voluntary, voluntary resignations, 10% of them indicated that they were leaving for a job with a higher salary, and 26, and you can only, you can only put one reason in the system. So these were the reasons that folks put in there. 26 of the voluntary, 26% of voluntary resignations indicated they were leaving for another position in education. And when folks tell us they're leaving for another position in education, it generally means they're leaving for a higher salary. And this slide will show you numerically where we stand against our competitors, looking at just some key, key years over time. So as you can see, we are, and this is just the teacher scale, so as you can see, we are behind our neighbors. So what we are hoping to accomplish with the compensation study, we're hoping for quite a few recommendations. One, so that we are able to promote external equity and look at our market competitiveness. It's very simple to do with teacher scales. It is not quite as simple when you're talking about positions that are not on the teacher scale. So the compensation study itself will actually focus on our general scale. Nicole Samuelson, our compensation analyst, will take care of the work around the teacher scales. And then also, we want to look at providing internal equity, and I, you all know how important internal equity is, and we're going to look for that within both job classes and between job classes. Also, we're going to be looking for information on best practices for differentiated pay, hiring incentives, looking at sign-on bonuses, and how to present compensation creep over time, which is what we've seen, you know, over, over the years. And that's what happens when, you know, we end up with compression, so we want to find ways to eliminate that. Also, we're looking for a proposal on how to recommend, or a recommendation on how to introduce these plans into the budget process. It's going to be expensive, so we're going to be looking for their assistance on how to make it affordable. As I said, short-term actions for the FY17 budget, so this will take effect July 1, 2016, for the 16, 17 school year. We will begin addressing external market issues with the teacher scale, and Ms. Samuelson will be taking care of all of these recommendations for this 16, 17 school year. We'll also be recommending a general increase for all other employees that are not on the teacher scale, and we will, hopefully, funds, funds available, will begin addressing internal compression issues. In terms of long-term plans, we will be utilizing the Hay Group to conduct a compensation study. Hay Group is nationally and internationally recognized for their compensation expertise. We will, the compensation study recommendations will be reviewed and considered as part of the FY18 budget process, which sounds really far away, but it's not. That's actually the 17, 18 school year. And as practicable, we will begin implementation of their recommendations in July of 2017. Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Ruth. Questions from board members for Ms. Ruth, Mr. Kilgore?
Yeah, just real quick, the one slide talked about best practices for differentiated pay.
Yes.
Is that the equivalent of supplements, or is that different than supplements?
Differentiated pay can be a lot of different things. It can include supplements. It could include, from a best practice perspective, do we want to consider having a separate pay scale for STEM teachers as opposed to teachers who are not teaching in STEM areas? So differentiated pay could mean a lot of different things.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Samuelson? Mrs. Smith?
Well, there you go. I actually have a follow-up on what Mr. Kilgore said, the differentiated, because I was curious about paying like based on performance. Is that another way of...
That is another possibility. That is a form of differentiated pay, and certainly we will be looking to the Hay Group to provide us with best practices.
Okay, that would be good. And just so I understand the timeline a little bit, you'll have the Hay Group conduct it. When are you looking at that starting, and when, when would it end? When would we actually have...
We will actually be starting the study quite soon, probably by, we have to go through the procurement process. We're going to be writing, Newport News Public Schools has utilized the Hay Group just recently. And so we're going to be writing their RFP, so we need to, we wanted to wait until after this presentation before we started the procurement process. So I anticipate they'll start in February, and the estimated timeline is about seven months. So late August, early September, we should have results, and we'll then begin making recommend, you know, massaging the information and making recommendations based on funds available and what we can afford.
Okay, that will time in well then with the budget for, okay, very good. I'm just really happy to see that this is finally happening, so.
Yeah, we are excited to, to embark on this adventure.
Absolutely.
Mr. Samuelson?
This is my turn. Robin, thank you so much for that report.
Absolutely.
It's, it's needed.
Yes, sir.
But as you know, the city of Hampton's conducted a similar study, and I wanted to know if we were going to reach out to them to see what some of their best practices that they used when they conducted their study last year and get some feedback from their group. In addition to that, would it be in our best interest to probably have a cooperative agreement and use the same vendor that they utilize? And because that would somewhat eliminate the time and decrease the funding?
We have discussed that option, and it was determined that was not a viable option.
Okay.
We are, because we are using the, the same group that Newport News Public Schools used, we are affecting some savings in terms of the survey. Obviously, the, the recommendations that we receive will be specific to Hampton City Schools, but they will not have to do double the data collection, so there are some cost savings there.
Mrs. Henry?
You did mention that with regard to the teaching scale, our own internal analysts will be looking at those in terms of the budget recommendations for this next year. So we're not going to sit around and wait until we get another report before we consider budget recommendations for next year. Is that, that is how I understood your report?
That is correct. We have a number of recommendations, and it, how far we're able to go is dependent upon the funds that are available.
Right, but we'll be in a position to offer a prioritized framework
Yes.
with regard to teacher scale and equity there, and also, of course, the budgeting implications for a general increase of some sort.
Yes, we'll be presenting those recommendations to the Budget Committee within the next week, so, yes.
I know teachers don't want to hear that, oh my, it'll be another September before we consider teacher salary.
No, no, we are hoping to take action effective July 1, 2016.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments from board members for Ms. Ruth? Okay, thank you very much
Thank you.
for the report. We look forward to the results and the outcome and, and being in a position to move forward on, on some of the recommendations. Dr. Smith?
Yes, well, now move to the governor's budget update, and Mrs. Scott will share information in terms of the governor's budget and the implications for Hampton City Schools at this particular point, and also ask the board to, or request of the board this evening to share any priorities that you may have as we move forward with the, the budget process. And I think, Mrs. Scott, you provided members of the board with a copy of the budget decision process.
She should have a sheet that looks like this.
Right, so later, as part of her presentation, she will ask and solicit information from members of the board.
At that point, I'll be moving back over there.
Yes.
I like your snowflakes, Ms. Scott.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I actually started working on this presentation before the Christmas break, so the timing is just coincidental.
Okay. Do we have a snow report tonight? Has anything started? Do we know?
Yeah, I've, I've heard snow overnight. I'm just hoping not much.
Okay.
I've got my people on watch. Good evening, Mrs. Mugler, Mr. Pearson, Dr. Smith, members of the board. I am here tonight to talk to you about what was presented in the governor's budget in December for the fiscal year 1618, which for us is FY17 and FY18, beginning July 1. So as we, sorry, this, this is new to me, so, there we go. First, let's talk a little bit about our enrollment. We do continue to see a decline in enrollment over the next few years. Our fall 2015 enrollment was down by 115 stu, or 118 students, but that's really only a little over half a percent, so not too bad. We do use the Weldon Cooper model to project our fall membership, and from the fall membership projections, we then estimate the March ADM, which is what all of our state funding is based on. So using that model, we came up with a fall 2016 membership of approximately 19,663 students, which is down about one and a half percent. When we use that number to project the March ADM for March of 17, we come up with a budgeted number of 19,500, which is down from the 19.7 that we're using this year of 200 students. All right, so let's look a little bit at the revenue scenario. First of all, I've got to say, we're pretty excited. It is the best revenue scenario that we have seen in so many years, we couldn't even remember what the opposite of a deficit was. We had to kind of rack our brains to come up with the word surplus. So it's pretty exciting to think that we actually do have a little bit of revenue to work with this year. The local composite index dropped from .2878 to .2773. And if you'll recall from prior discussions, what that means is that they have determined that the city's relative wealth has dropped relative to the rest of the state, and that that gives us a little bit more state funding. To make it really simple, the .2878 means we get, we have to contribute 28.78 cents of every dollar of funding, and the state gives us the other 71.22 cents. So now the state will be giving us 72.27 cents. So we get a little bit more state funding this way. And what that translates to for us, even with our reduced enrollment in FY17, it's about a million three more because of the composite index change. So it does benefit us. Our state revenue in total is up by just over $4 million, even with our reduced enrollment. Part of the governor's budget initiative was to provide funding for one per elementary school position. So we have 18 elementary schools, so for us, we got funding for 18 elementary positions. These positions can be for any SOQ-funded instructional position. So it can be a teacher, guidance counselor, librarian, principal, assistant principal, instructional assistant, any SOQ-funded instructional position. The caveat to that is, if you are a division in declining enrollment and you, say, reduce your teacher base from the current year, then you cannot use the money to hire teachers. You could hire those other positions as long as your base goes up from FY16. So we have to, I see Mr. Kilgore shaking his head. You can ask me more about it at the end. But anyway, that's, again, in the governor's proposed budget, so not sure what the General Assembly will do with that, but we are working within that right now in our budget discussions. We will see an increase in the VRS rate from 15.12 to 15.77. This includes the retiree healthcare credit. They are continuing to phase in full funding of the VRS actuarial rate, and so this is the, the next-to-the-last increase. The, it goes up again in 18, which I'll give you a couple of FY18 highlights in a second. The basic aid per pupil allocation went up by $91 per student. They did fully fund the re-benchmarking, so that was nice for a change. The local contribution, at this point, we are level funding. The city is a little bit behind us in their budget process, and so they have not completed their revenue estimates yet, so we're awaiting a local contribution number. But they told us that if we went with level funding for now, they, they felt comfortable with that. Our miscellaneous and impact aid revenue is expected to go down just a little bit, 133,000. So overall, we're looking at a revenue increase, projected revenue increase, based on the governor's budget of about $4 million, which sounds so much better than some of the prior years where we were looking at deficits of that much or more. So, great progress. Oh, and I did say I'd give you some FY18 highlights. For fiscal 18, they are proposing a compensation increase 2%. It's not in the FY17 budget right now. Again, don't know what the General Assembly may do with that, but the governor's budget has a compensation increase only in the second year of the biennium. The VRS rate goes up again, and it goes to a total of, oh, wait about it, 17.55 with the retiree healthcare credit. And that's substantial when we have a VRS increase of that much. So that will be a significant expenditure pressure in FY18. Also, on the funded instructional positions, where it's one per elementary school in FY17, in FY18, they add, in addition to the one position per elementary, they add two per secondary. So for us, that'll be a total of 40 funded positions in FY18. But again, you, you have to hire those positions above your base for the previous year in order to be eligible for the funding. It is incentive funding. All right, so what are some of our expenditure pressures that we know about? Salary increase, if we start talking about salary increases, the cost is 1.3 million for every 1%, so it is a significant cost. Our health insurance, based on preliminary estimates from our benefits consultants, is about a million and a half dollars. We are continuing to work with Wells Fargo. In fact, we have a meeting with them next Tuesday that we will go through some of the specifics of what's driving the increase, and in addition, talk about some strategies. And they may be able to give us a little bit of an updated trend that may or may not change the overall projection, but we will continue. And the estimate right now is based on no changes to the existing plans. Again, the 18 elementary positions that we talked about on the revenue side become an expenditure pressure as well, because we must hire those positions in order to get the funding. So at a minimum, we have to spend the, the money on the flip side. The VRS increase amounts to $630,000, and again, that was a relatively small increase for FY17, but it was still 630,000. Anticipated contract increases, we don't actually have formal quotes from either company for WART Plumbing and Heating and for GCA for their contract increases for next year. New Horizons, if you'll recall, last year's budget included six months of funding for the new facility at the Woodside campus, so this is to put in the other six months and make it a full year for that building. The staffing costs, we have had a significant increase this year in substitute staff aides and interpreters, and so because it is an ongoing pressure, we need to actually budget the $84,000 for it. E-rate changes, we are looking at, I believe we mentioned to you last year that they are phasing out e-rate funding for voice services at 20% a year over a five-year period, so this is the next 20% hit. And again, these are, all of these are estimates, so they may change as we get updated information or as we go through the budget process. or as we go through the budget process, but this is where we are right now. The Virginia Local Disability Plan, when they added the hybrid VRS employees, so you, right now, we have Plan One employees, Plan Two employees, and hybrid employees. So when the hybrid employees, we lovingly call that Plan Three, but when the hybrid employees came on board, they have a mandatory disability plan that cannot be paid for by the employee. So for our Plan One and Plan Two employees, we offer disability insurance, but it's employee paid. This has to be paid by the employer. So we have enough employees now that we have hired in the hybrid plan, plus what we estimate we may hire next year, that we need to actually add a budget for that disability piece. So that's about $56,000. Projected city costs, the largest part of that is for self-insurance, which continues to increase at a higher level, can I, there, continues to increase at a higher level than we would like to see, but we don't have a whole lot of control over that. So right now, and it also has an increase for the SROs because we got a higher bill than what was in the budget, so we've estimated that there may be other increases, but we haven't gotten all of that information, again, because the city is still very early in their process. The two-spad instructional assistants were positions that we had to hire with contingency this year, and they are required, so we need to add them to the budget. The Academies partnership is a $90,000 fee that can be paid over three years, so that's $30,000 for the first year. And then other $18,000 is a combination of some software that to, once the compensation study is complete, there is some software with an annual subscription for us to keep the database going that they have created, the information that they have created for us, so that we can maintain it. And then some funding that goes towards supporting the winner of the Teacher of the Year next year and in subsequent years. All right, on the expenditure saving side, we like to give a few savings, and there are a couple of really big ones here. Year-over-year attrition, which as you know, when we download the employees that we have at a moment in time to budget for next year, we look at the difference between that and the previous year. So that's a savings of about $1.4 million. And then really good news, our Hampton employees retirement system, they, we get a new actuarial valuation every two years, and so we just got a new one, and the contribution for the next two years is going down by a little over $1 million per year. So that's huge. We're very happy about that. And then just a small amount, because our per pupil, because our enrollment is going down, our per pupil allocations go down a little bit, so we save a little bit of money there. The General Assembly session opened on the 13th, which was last Wednesday. We still don't know, you know, what the actions of the General Assembly may be. They take the governor's budget, and things may change. They may get better, they may get worse, who knows? But we work with, we have always worked with the governor's budget in our deliberations because it can be, you know, pretty far into the process, and in this case, the session doesn't end until the middle of March, and we're already presenting to the board. So we have always built the budget on the governor's budget, and then we make changes as the General Assembly makes final decisions. So what are the next steps? Well, at this point, we are actively meeting to have budget discussions. We continue to work on balancing it. We are using the budget decision process that was given to you, that you have on your table there. It is linked to our strategic plan. It is a process that every DLT member, as they review the budget submissions from their departments, asks these questions and makes sure that any new initiatives or requests that are put forward in the budget process satisfy the criteria and the questions that are asked in this process. We want to make sure that anything that we are adding to the budget as a new initiative or program or person or whatever is supporting the overall goals of the strategic plan and that we know how it's supporting it, so that we're making a good informed decision on that. We are staying abreast of the General Assembly actions, obviously, anything that relates to K-12 actions. And of course, there are many, many bills every year, a lot of which die and nothing ever comes of it, but we look at all of them, we determine the impact, and, you know, we keep an eye on what's going on. We do continue to gather stakeholder input, and that will start tonight. We'll be gathering some input from all of you. We'll be scheduling the two-by-two meetings in February, as well as the buddy meetings with city council. We will be preparing to present the other funds budget, so not the operating budget, but the budgets for Funds 51, 60, 65, and 94, which is our food nutrition services, grants, rental income, and student activities. They will be presented first on March the 2nd, followed by the general operating budget, or Fund 50, on March the 9th. Are there any questions about the budget highlights before we move into your input?
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Any questions regarding the budget? Mrs. Henry?
Just one, and I know you're going to give us a bigger picture about the healthcare situation. When you do that, can you include in that some picture of what percentage of employees are opting for the high deductible option, and if that has any, has had any effect on costs? You know, because our hope was that more, with the incentive of the contribution to the savings account, that more employees would opt for the high deductible, and that that would be an overall savings, so.
And we are continuing to see migration to that. It's increased significantly this year over last year, and I think the contribution did help, but it's also a learning curve. You know, people are a little bit afraid of it, and so I think as more people get into it and, you know, are able to talk to one another and understand it better, we'll see more migration, but we did see a significant increase this year.
And then, I'm sure it will also include participation in the Wellness Center and that effect on the costs as well.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Well, we'll look forward to hearing that, because that's always a big, a big bite, and if there can be some adjustment in that prediction, that helps a whole lot.
Yep, and I know I've heard some wonderful comments about the pharmacy since it opened a few months ago, so that seems to be very popular.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Scott? All right.
Okay.
We can move ahead.
Then I am going to slide over here. And get out of this. All right, so we're going to talk about, a little bit about the priorities of the school board for the FY17 budget. And I think what I'm going to do, first of all, tie it to our strategic plan, obviously, which I've put our strategic focus areas up there. I won't be able to leave them there, but I know that all of you have got those committed to memory. I'm not concerned that you know what they are, but just for the viewing public to remind everybody what our strategic focus areas are. And of course, Dr. Smith went through them very eloquently tonight, too, with his look, listen, and learn review. But maximizing every child's learning, creating safe nurturing environments, attracting, developing, and retaining exceptional staff, enhancing family and community engagement and satisfaction, maintaining effective, efficient, and innovative support systems, and managing fiscal resources effectively and efficiently. So we want anything that we do with the budget to be tied back to our strategic focus areas. And with that, I think I'm just going to ask for input, and I'm going to type it in here so that you can make sure what I'm writing is what you're saying.
Okay. So, board members, why don't we, I know you may have like a laundry list, so instead of giving all of your laundry list at once, if you can give one, and then we'll give everyone an opportunity. That way, maybe some of us who are, have some of the same wishes, we at least have an opportunity to weigh in on this budget. So we'll start. Mr. Kilgore?
Okay, I, like you said, looking at the 2020 strategic plan and hearing input from Community Priorities Workshop and the budget decision process, the first one that came to mind for me was to restore the supplements that we cut by 25%.
Mrs. Henry?
Okay, today, we were at Phillips School to see a beautiful addition to the building. Those expenses are not cheap. And safe nurturing environment, I want to remind us to get our two cents in on the capital improvement budget and make sure that we are truly requesting everything we need to continue those kinds of important renovations for the safety and the environment of our schools.
So to clarify.
It's a different, but I just wanted, we're talking about the.
Lobby for additional funding?
I just want to make sure we've got enough in the request from the city to cover things like, that one building had new built, new windows, new breezeway, new lighting, new, you know, then they still haven't gotten, I think, new restrooms. We're doing that kind of process, and we need to make sure we have the funds to keep on doing that throughout the city.
Absolutely. So is this accurate to maintain or increase the CIP funding?
That's accurate. Thank you.
Mr. Pearson?
Well, looking at two of the strategic goals involving attracting, retaining staff, outstanding staff, and also always looking at academic achievement, I guess for the last five or six years, we've always thought about compensation. And based on some reports that we've seen in our local newspaper, and based on some information we received tonight, and also looking ahead at the compensation study that we're going to start, we have to try to find some compensation, some increase for the people in this school system that mean so much. And we think about academic achievement, no one affects student learning more than the teaching in the classroom. And then we have other people, bus drivers and custodians and nurses and administrators and everybody else in the school system that has some involvement with our students. So first and foremost, in my mind, we need some salary increases.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Mrs. Smith?
For taking a lot of mine, okay. One thing that I've seen from touring the schools that I'd love to see come back is having full-time elementary counselors at each of the schools, just for that support under the maximize learning. It's a lot of that when schools are sharing counselors, the students can't necessarily schedule when they're going to have, and need some emotional support, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Mr. Samuels?
And, Mr. Pearson addressed one of my concerns regarding this, and making sure that to attract and retain qualified teachers, to ensure that they are compensated adequately. In addition to that, I would like to see there are several grade levels, especially in elementary school, that don't have teachers' assistance. I would like to see that if funding are available, to ensure that we have teachers' assistance and elementary grades to support our teachers.
Okay, so is the first part competitive salary?
Competitive salary.
And then the next part is instructional assistance?
Instructional assistance.
What grade level? Just elementary?
Elementary, yes.
All right, I don't know why it won't, excuse the lowercase a, it doesn't like it when you try and make.
You can fix that later.
Yeah, I will.
Okay. All right. I would like to see us have a funding priority for the support of the Academies Initiative.
Okay.
And we'll go back to Mr. Kilgore.
I guess just a point of clarification, if it's up there already, you don't want us to say it again, or do you want us to repeat them?
If there's some, if you've got something on your list that's already there and you want to just reiterate it?
The three that I had are up there now, so.
Okay, okay. Mrs. Henry?
Yeah, I think we all agree that compensation is a priority, and it has to be for leadership positions, too. And Mr. Pearson mentioned everybody, you know, everybody's working hard and everybody is working at less than perhaps competitive wages. So I think there's no one on this board that would not make the salaries a priority.
Absolutely. Anything additional, Mr. Pearson? Mr. Samuels?
Just wanted a other item I would like to address, as Dr. Smith alluded to how critical it is for early reading skills. I would like to see us increase or expand our pre-K centers, or increase the number of students enrolled, especially at Moulton Elementary.
And Mrs. Smith, I'm sorry, I skipped our review there, so.
Oh, that's all right. Okay, what do I want to say next? One thing that, I don't, it's a big thing, so I don't know that that would be possible, but we're just putting it out there. One thing that we took away a while ago is transportation to our choice schools, and for a lot of students and families, providing their own transportation is an obstacle that prevents them from having those choices, so it's just something on the list there, to try to provide transport, bus transportation to choice schools.
And Mr. Kilgore, yours are all up. Mrs. Henry, yours are all, yours are all up. Anything else to my left?
I have a couple of things that I wanted to protect, but they're not things that have come up before. I don't know if this would be a time to say those, or if this is just for new things that... Okay, I'll just say it. How about that?
Go ahead.
All right. I definitely, arts and music is something that keeps coming up every time, and one, something that I want to make sure that, we keep saving, but want to make sure we keep that. And try to protect class size as well from here out, and nurses, and really everybody in the entire school system, no one, but those are the key ones. And then one last thought I had was, over just the past recent years, we've had several school closings, we've had many changes in housing around the city, Fort Monroe closing, declining enrollment, just a lot's gone on. And when I've toured schools, I've seen a lot of schools that are really packed and some that are, have a lot of space, and I just think it would be good, just fiscally, to have a good look at where we are really with our buildings and how that balances out. But just an observation I've had, I'm not sure how you write that or how you think that through, but.
Well, I hear the way we have schools zoned.
Yeah, I was afraid to say that word, but yeah.
That's the only way I know to phrase it.
Anything further?
I am done, thank you.
All right. I think that captures everything, you know, just to reiterate what others have said, certainly, you know, establishing some supplement pay increases after the 25% reduction in those, and I'd reiterate the incorporating employee compensation adjustments as we are able. Anything further from board members? All right. Thank you, Ms. Scott. Dr. Smith?
Yes, ma'am. We'll move right to Mrs. Scott standing there.
Yes.
And so she will move us into the business operations in terms of financial report to the board. So, Mrs. Scott?
And while I'm hitting the save button here, so I don't lose what you all said, just one clarification, we do have full-time counselors at all of our elementary schools.
Okay, so they're not sharing at Dr. Capes and Armstrong anymore?
Okay, great. That was quick, thank you.
Ask for something else.
I don't like that.
I gotta make sure. I gotta get that presentation off of there. All right. Okay, switch gears here. All right, now, financial report for tonight. As you know, we do this on a monthly basis, and we're up to November. So as of November the 30th, our total revenues, as of that date, were $64,415,092. Our expenditures and encumbrances were $77,858,328. And as I repeat every month, but you never know who's listening, the expenditures and encumbrances are larger because they do include encumbered expenditures that go through the school year. And so we pay them as they occur, but they are encumbered for the year, so that's why it looks like it's out of proportion to the revenue. This is on target for this point in the year, and based on our budgeted ADM of $19,700, This is on target for this point in the year and based on our budgeted ADM of $19,700. Our fall membership report, we reported a total of 19,964 students. Based on that, our projected March ADM is revised to be 19,782, so a little bit higher than what we had budgeted. And this results in a revenue increase just based on the enrollment of 423,000, although there are other revenue impacts that could change that total number as we go through the year. And then also attached to your report, as we've been doing for several months now, is a report of the transfers between, to and from category nine. So with that, are there any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Scott on her business operations report?
Okay, all right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Smith?
Madam Chair, I think that's it for superintendent and staff report, so we'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I make one comment following the superintendent reports?
Of course.
I, I just want to say, I, I just really enjoyed seeing how all of these reports tonight followed the strategic plan and how everything has such a clear purpose and it's just so focused. And I, I just wanted to share that, I just thought that was really wonderful how that all came together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We move to the hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. Ms. Bowers, I don't have any forms?
Nope.
Okay. So we'll move right along to items for action. Excuse me. Beginning with item 6.01 and 6.02, which are minutes of the school board meeting of December 2 and minutes of the school board meeting of December 16. Since those are somewhat connected, would we like to vote on the two of them together? Is there any objections?
Madam Chairman, I move that we consider item 6.1 and 6.0, 6.01 and 6.02 together and that we approve them as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we approve, excuse me, the minutes of school board meeting of December 2 and December 16. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. We move on to item 6.03, which is a resolution conveying title of real property formerly known as With Elementary School to the City of Hampton and granting the City of Hampton a license to locate at a neighborhood center at Asbury Elementary School. And I'll just provide a, a small history on, on this particular resolution and how we came to this place and time for this adoption of resolution. Upon the opening of Andrews Pre-K through 8 school in 2010, With Elementary School was taken offline and closed. The facility was constructed in 1936 and the school division partnered with the City of Hampton in 2013 to engage in a series of public hearings and an online survey was also launched in 2013. The feedback from community members provided valuable information and clearly affirmed that the Little League ball fields on that property are considered to be an enormous asset in that, in that area and that they should be preserved. In addition, there was a desire, if it is feasible, to preserve the school building for its historical and architectural significance. As the city and the school division concluded its work with the community in cooperation with Hampton Redevelopment and Housing Authority, a request for qualifications was issued for interested developers to submit property use and redevelopment proposals. As preparations were underway for a formal request for proposal, for project proposals, the City of Hampton determined that the property options previously identified for the With Fire Station expansion were not viable and that they needed a parcel of land from the With School property in order to accommodate the necessary remodeling and renovation and expansion of the existing fire station there in the With community. In order to accommodate the needs of the city for this critical public safety expansion project, the school division entered into discussions with the city to come to an agreement regarding the property. And after careful consideration, the school board has determined that it is in the best interest of the city and the school division that the entire property be transferred to the city, with the city and their expertise continuing with the redevelopment process while honoring the community's wishes. In addition, in early 2015, the city approached the school board in regard to property adjacent to Asbury Elementary School with a proposal to locate a neighborhood center on the property of Asbury Elementary School. The project will be built on approximately 2.15 acres of the school property, that might be 2.25, but a little over two acres of the school property to the right of the school as you face it. The center will replace the Nike Site Center located at Whipple Point that was destroyed by a tornado. The center is scheduled to open after school hours and will be staffed by community volunteers and Parks and Recreation staff. The center will be available to the students of Asbury Elementary School during the school day, which will provide a gymnasium-like space, which will be a tremendous asset for our students there. With all this said, Mr. Pearson, if you will, please read the resolution.
Rese, excuse me. Resolution conveying the title to real property formerly known as With Elementary School to the City of Hampton and granting the City of Hampton a license to locate a neighborhood center at Asbury Elementary School. Whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 22-1-129, the school board has determined that real property located at 200 Claremont Avenue, Hampton, Virginia 23661, formerly known as With Elementary School, is surplus property. And whereas the City of Hampton has immediate plans to expand the current fire station adjacent to the school property, including drive-through bays for fire trucks, to assure the safety of the public living in the station's service area. And whereas the school board wishes to convey the title to such real property to the City of Hampton in order to provide acreage for the fire station expansion and to entrust the city to pursue potential redevelopment, appropriate disposition, or demolition of the school building. And whereas the City of Hampton has assured the school board that it is committed to honoring the desires of the community expressed during public forums held to discuss the best use of the property, including but not limited to the continued use of the property for ball fields and community recreational purposes. And whereas the city desires to construct an 18,200 square foot neighborhood center with adjacent parking on approximately 2.5 acres of the 13.53 acre parcel known as Asbury Elementary School, 140 Beach Road, Hampton, Virginia 23664. And whereas the school board has determined that there is strong support in the community for such a neighborhood-oriented facility, that there is sufficient space on Asbury property to house such a facility, including adequate parking, and the facility will be available for use by Asbury students during the day as needed. And whereas the school board acknowledges its intent to enter into a long-term agreement with the city, developed and executed in a separate document for the purposes of allowing the city to construct the proposed neighborhood center and parking, with sufficient parking spaces to serve the current parking needs on the property that support school and recreational field use, as well as increased parking needs that are anticipated with the new center. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the school board of the City of Hampton agrees to de-title to the property formerly known as With Elementary School to the city and directs its chair to execute all documentation necessary to assure the conveyance. And it is further resolved that the school board acknowledges agreement to allow the city to construct a neighborhood city, neighborhood center on the property of Asbury Elementary School, including constructing parking spaces, spaces sufficient to serve the multiple uses of the property. Such agreement to be memorized in a separate agreement between the school board of the City of Hampton and the City of Hampton, approved as to form and legal sufficiency by the school board attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Is there any further discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. I'm, I'm sorry. Point of order? You need a motion before the vote. Absolutely, we do.
That's a great idea.
So I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman.
With regard to the resolution.
I move that we approve the resolution previously read to us by Mr. Pearson, conveying the property at With Elementary School and granting the license to locate the neighborhood center at Asbury Elementary School.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Mr. Samuels that we approve the resolution conveying real property formerly known as With Elementary School to the City of Hampton and granting the City of Hampton a license to locate a neighborhood center at Asbury Elementary School. Thank you, Ms. Reeves, for that point of clarification. Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. We'll move on to item 6.04, the resolution in support of partnership between Ford Next Generation Learning, Hampton City Schools, and the Peninsula Workforce Development. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of action item 6.04.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Smith that we approve the resolution in support of partnership between Ford Next Generation Learning, Hampton City Schools, and the Peninsula Council Workforce Development. And I will make a brief historical statement regarding how the school board has come to this place. Division Leadership began study of Ford Next Generation Learning Academy approach in late 2014 into 2015. Ford NGL came to Hampton in the spring of 2015, as Dr. Woods explained earlier in the evening, for an exploration visit and met with Hampton stakeholders, including school division leadership, administrators, city officials, business leaders, the Chamber of Commerce, the Peninsula Council for Workforce Development, and others. A number of stakeholders from Hampton participated in Nashville Academy study visits to see wall-to-wall academy concept in action. The concept merges academic rigor with career and technical education to provide students' focus for their high school education on a particular career pathway. It provides small learning communities and relies on relationships with employers and post-secondary education institutions. Academies are not new to Hampton City Schools. We have grown our academies to include at least one at each of our four high schools. Our first academy work probably started in Phoebus High School, as Ms. Henry could, could give us historical perspective on that, I'm sure, but it has evolved to what is now today the Idea Academy at, at Phoebus High School, focusing on information design and engineering. And at Bethel High School, we host our Governor's Health Sciences Academy. Kickatan High School features our Architecture and Applied Arts Governor STEM Academy. And rounding out our academy offerings in Hampton is Hampton High School's Aerospace and Information Technology Academy. And from each of these academy offerings, there are a number of strands and pathways for more defined career focus. We are excited to further expand to wall-to-wall academies in partnership with Ford Next Generation Learning and our conveying partner, the Peninsula Council for Workforce Development. We expect that our alliance with Ford NGL will provide a framework that supports and mobilizes educators, employers, and community leaders to create a new generation of young people who will graduate from high school both college and career-ready. Notable differences will be in curriculum design and collaboration with industry professionals and the pilot of intensive freshman academies, which will develop and focus on relationships between teachers, administrators, and their students. This is what we consider to be a bold and transformational initiative, and it is right for Hampton and our young people. Most notable is the research that backs it up and indicates that career academy programs can increase student motivation, participation, attendance, and ultimately student achievement. Additional, additionally known and proven benefits have been decreased gang participation, increased graduation rates, improvement to school climate, and higher sustained earnings after graduation. With all that said, I will ask Mr. Kilgore if he will please read the resolution.
Be happy to. Resolution in support of a partnership between Ford Next Generation Learning, Hampton City Schools, and Peninsula Council for Workforce Development. Whereas the Hampton School Board desires to enter into a partnership with Ford Next Generation Learning, Ford NGL, and the Peninsula Council for Workforce Development to ensure students graduate from Hampton City Schools, college and career-ready, prepared to reach their full potential. And whereas in collaboration with our community and community partners, Hampton City Schools ensures academic excellence for every child, every day, whatever it takes. And whereas a partnership with Ford NGL and the Peninsula Council of, for Workforce Development will further strengthen and formalize the engagement of our community through additional college and career academies, specifically career pathways that drive economic growth in our region. And whereas the school board, along with internal and external stakeholders, desire to innovate and further increase student achievement, improve workforce and economic development outcomes, and ultimately achieve community prosperity through college and career academy expansion. And our community is in support of providing meaningful learning experiences that enable students to learn and apply academic 21st century and technical knowledge and skills to real-world challenges that equip them for success in college and careers. And whereas a partnership with Ford NGL will build on Hampton's culture of collaboration in which all stakeholders, students, teachers, administrators, families, industry leaders, employers, post-secondary educators, and nonprofit and civic leaders work together to build a climate of trust that welcomes all perspectives. And whereas the board involvement with local employers, community groups, and post-secondary institutions will assist in the development of student internships and other work-based learning opportunities, integration of curriculum development that leads to real-world career opportunities for both students and teachers, increased post-secondary attainment and scholarship opportunities. And whereas business, civic, and education leaders will collaborate on the creation of a master plan for sustain, for sustainable workforce competitiveness and community prosperity built on education transformation. And whereas a partnership with Ford NGL will build on our strengths by leveraging the power of workplace relevance and business relationships to further support students in their education, particularly in the area of STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math education, to prepare them for college, career, and life. And whereas the development of freshman academies will provide further opportunities for students to explore college and career opportunities on the pathway to achieving a diploma, industry certifications, and authentic experiences as part of this valuable partnership. And whereas the expansion of academies will enhance the system of personalized college and career plans for every student based on student interest and aspirations, to chart a 10-year plan that includes post-secondary education and training. And whereas students' personalized college and career pathways will lead to dual credits and industry credentials that are aligned with the workforce needs in our region, providing the students an opportunity to pursue their passions. And, and our community will have the highly skilled workforce needed to remain competitive. And whereas students will have enhanced opportunities to earn dual credits while in high school to make pursuit of post-secondary education more affordable and attainable. And whereas a partnership with Ford Next Generation Learning and- and Peninsula Workforce Development will further cultivate a spirit of innovation to transform our secondary schools, to prepare our graduates to live, work, and shape the future growth and development of our region and nation. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the school board memorializing the commitment of the school board to engage in a collaborative community approach to support and enhance teaching and learning for, one, increase student academic achievement, two, improve preparation for college, career, and life, three, increase high school graduation rates, four, increase earning potential, and ultimately, five, greater community prosperity. And the superintendent is authorized on behalf of the school board to execute and sign all contracts, agreements, and documents necessary to bind this relationship approved as to form and legal sufficiency by the school board attorney adopted in Hampton, Virginia, this 20th day of January 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. Is there any additional discussion from board members? Mrs. Henry?
Ms. Mugler, I thank you for your historical outline and Dr. Woods for her enthusiasm in asking and answering the essential question for why we want to do this. I confessed last at our last meeting, I was probably the least excited board member about this partnership to begin with because the ideas are not new. We've created at various times and in various places virtually all the elements of the Ford Academies program. But I'm happy to vote for the partnership today because, first of all, the Ford program presents a well-developed set of strategies to involve businesses in continuing partners with our career partnerships with our career programs. Secondly, because I believe all our students deserve the support, encouragement, and opportunities that some of our students have enjoyed for exposure to real-world problems, experience to include earning industry certifications and college credit. And finally, I believe that our superintendent's systems approach will assure that meaningful career exploration and opportunities to achieve personal goals will be implemented for all students and not just some. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. Any additional comments or questions regarding the resolution? We have a motion on the floor. Will you call the vote, Ms. Bowers?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. I think we should clap for that. It's very exciting. We'll move on to item 6.05. We have a series of policy revisions on for action tonight that run from 6.05 to 6.10. Is there a motion to take those in block, or would we like to take them one at a time?
Madam Chair, I move approval of action items 6.05 through 6.010.
Second.
I think that meant you wanted to vote on them in a block. So we will vote on item 6.05, the revision of school board policy JFCH, alcohol use and possession. 6.06, the review of school board policy JFCE, fraternities, sororities, and secret societies. 6.07, the revision of school board policy JFCB, care of school property by students. 6.08, which is the revision of school board policy FE, playground equipment. School board policy 6.09, the revision of FG, retirement of facilities. And the final item on our action agenda tonight is item 6.10, the revision of school board policy IKFA, locally verified credits. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to deliberation tonight, we have, starting with item 7.01, the revision of school board policy IKA, grading system. And I know we had some suggestions from a board member on this particular one, so we'll take up discussion on this particular policy revision of IKA, the grading system. Ms. Reeves, would you like to address that? Or?
I think we've been working with Dr. Woods as well.
I didn't see you come up, Dr. Woods.
Yeah, I'm here.
And she will include in her remarks.
Yes. Yes, policy IKA was modified by moving the SOL and AP exam exemption language from policy JED. As mentioned, you have a paper copy of suggested language based on feedback from a board member relative to the SOL exemption to inform students that they must successfully complete all classwork and culminating assessments subsequent to the administration of the SOLs, which will compromise, I'm sorry, comprise the overall semester grade average. So we have that proposed change for you there that's highlighted in green. We'll be happy to put policy IKA back on for the February 3 deliberation agenda to give board members additional time to reflect on the new changes that are proposed.
Are there questions or comments from board members on this suggested revision? Are board members comfortable letting this move forward to our action, or do you want to defer it back to deliberation?
Move forward.
Move it forward?
Forward.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Woods. So are we moving it forward with the new language? With the new language, Mrs. Henry?
Do, it's not on, it's still for deliberation, right? It's not for action.
It's currently on deliberation.
Right, so we don't have to move, yeah, moves it to the next meeting, but we don't have to move it this meeting?
Correct. We don't have to vote on it this meeting, but potentially any additional deliberation would.
I don't think that it's a big deal.
So move it to action at our next meeting?
With the added language.
With the added language, correct. Everyone comfortable with the added language? Okay, thank you, Ms. Reeves, for clarifying exactly what we're moving forward. Item 7.02 is the revision of school board policy IKC, high school class rank and course weight. And this also is a policy that we received a paper copy. I know there were some revisions that are highlighted in green for you on this. Dr. Woods, would you like to address?
Yes, you have a paper copy of some suggested revisions from a board member to specify underweighted courses, the offerings at the Governor's School for Science and Technology at New Horizons Regional Education Center. Additionally, it was suggested to clarify the grade point average calculated using quality points and divided by the credit. The students receive a semester grade. So in that calculation piece, going back to the quality points as opposed to the grade points and how that's derived. So it provided additional accuracy and clarification. And those are highlighted in green.
Okay. And so in doing that, the red honors level courses isn't have anything to do with that particular revision? That's just a separate recommendation, correct? That was already in place?
Correct.
Any questions or comments from board members, Mr. Kilgore?
Just one, where you were changing grade point to quality point when you were talking about individual grades. On page three, on the third paragraph down, it reads, "For students who transfer into Hampton City School, grade points will be awarded for every completed course." If I'm not mistaken, that should actually be quality points will be awarded for every completed course?
Correct. We do convert them to quality, so we'll make that green as well.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments or recommendations? And so are board members comfortable with moving this forward to the action agenda with the revisions that are highlighted in green? Any objections to moving it forward as written? So it will move forward as proposed tonight? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Woods. Those were the only two that I had received any suggested revisions to.
I had a question about another one.
Okay. Is it IKF?
It is.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
My lucky.
When, at our last meeting, we approved IKFA, which discusses locally verified credits. It is referenced in this policy in the footnotes. It's not referenced anywhere in the text. And I would much prefer to have where it says, "Students may also earn verified credits by taking alternative tests, dah 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 dah." In that paragraph, I would like to have some specific reference to locally verified credits, as well as the reference at the end to IFA. Because you can still read this and think, "I don't have any other chance." And IFA gives you, I'm leaving out IKFA, gives you another chance. And it's referenced at the bottom, but not in the text. I would prefer to have a small reference in the text.
Yes, and I will be happy to add the language and bring that back over. So if we could put this back on for deliberation, so that that language can be added from IKFA.
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am.
So we'll defer that back for deliberation.
Yes.
IKF, all right. Item 7.04 is the revision of school board policy IC, nope, IGCB, alternative course completion. Are there any additional deliberative comments from board members on this policy revision? There being none, we'll move on to 7.05, the revision of school board policy LEB, advanced courses for credit. Any additional deliberative comments or suggestions from board members on advanced courses for credit?
I guess I had one concern that advanced courses for credit amounts to dual enrollment, correct? And I don't think there's anything in here that says anything about costs. Now, we haven't made any of that kind of policy decision, but I don't know that at some point it ought not be an issue that's discussed in the policy. In other words, if you take a course and you have an option to get dual credit for it, I would think that the board at some point needs to make a policy that says, "And the cost for the college credit will be borne by the student or the parent or the something." I mean, we have policies that explain the costs involved with advanced placement testing to give yourself an option for credit. There's no mention of cost in this policy.
Yes, and to that end, we have, and we're currently developing and finalizing, a large procedural manual that will go into programs and advanced studies relative to costs because it actually has multiple variables in terms of whether it's in our high school, whether it's at Thomas Nelson, whether it's at CNU, you know, there are lots of variables there. So we spell that out with specificity within our internal documents. It's very clear to parents when we do that agreement through our Form 170 that who pays for the course. But we have particular articulated agreements with Thomas Nelson, for example, if the dual enrollment courses are taught in our high schools and, you know, those kinds of things. So it depends.
And of course, there are the situations where if one has taken a certain level of CTE courses, and then one attends Thomas Nelson, you can get sort of retroactive credit for those courses through articulation agreements that we have, and there really isn't any cost for that. So I just wondered if we should say something in the policy relative to costs. I mean, if I'm a parent and I get excited, my child gets to take dual enrollment, isn't this great? Even if we just reference the regulations that are involved, that are part of the application policy.
We certainly can add that language relative to costs for the advanced courses for credit.
You know, you could say that costs are variable in this situation and that in all these situations, it certainly depends on the unique situation the child is in, and that the questions about that can be understood better from the regulations involved in the application.
Okay, you can certainly address that and bring that back for deliberation.
Yeah, if you'll bring that back for deliberation, but I think the simple reference to the document would.
Would help a lot.
Incorporate the language to just reference to the document would probably take care of that. In that way, the document wouldn't require a policy revision every time, you know, every time something might fluctuate. Okay, thank you. Item 7.06 is the revision of school board policy.
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry. Excuse me?
I had something else on that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's all right. The same comment that Ms. Henry had, but I also noticed the cross-references, I think the wording, the titles of them are not the latest titles that we have. It says IKF is graduation requirements. It should be standards of learning tests and graduation requirements. And the IKC should be high school class rank and course weight.
Okay, we'll double-check those cross-references.
Thanks, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Sorry I missed that.
Oh, no problem.
Is that all on policy LEB? Okay, moving on to policy JED, revision of school board policy JED, which is attendance policy. Is there any further deliberation on this particular policy revision? There being none, we'll move on to policy 7.07, which is the revision of school board policy GCBDK, which is the sick leave bank. Are there any questions or additional deliberative comments regarding this policy revision on the sick leave bank? Item 7.08, revision of school board policy GCBDJ, leave donation and transfer, and GCBDJ-R, which is leave donation and transfer guidelines. Any additional deliberation or comments on this policy revision? Mrs. Smith?
I just had one quick question on the GCBDJ-R, where it changed, where it took out the more than 15 workdays to just an extended period of time. I was just wondering why that was changed, just because an extended period of time seems subjective. What was the reasoning for that change?
Good evening again. We made the change to fit the circumstances that we see coming in, and 15 days, and for some situations, is excessive. And so we just put an extended period of time.
So you'll just judge it based on whatever case, so?
Yeah, we really, rather than time, we look at the, what's going on with the situation. For instance, we have some folks who are facing chemotherapy treatments, and so they need intermittent leave. And so it's hard to track their 15 days because they may be taking a day or two a week. And so we fit, we look at each circumstance individually, and we've discovered it's really more about the reason that somebody is out than the necessarily meeting that 15-day requirement.
Okay, okay, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. That was a good question. Item 7.09, revision of school board policy GBEA, workers' compensation leave. Any additional deliberation or questions on this policy revision? Okay, there being none, we'll move on to. Okay, there being none, we'll move on to deliberation first read. We start with item 8.01, which is the review of school board policy, it's covered up on my...
It should be DM, cash in school buildings?
Cash in school buildings, very good.
The only change to that one is to add a cross-reference. You know, all of these are being reviewed either because of the five-year review period or the SBA changes, so this one really is just adding a cross-reference.
Okay.
No other changes.
Any questions for clarification for Ms. Cott? Revision of school board policy DC, which is the fund balance policy.
Again, that this is up for its five-year review, and the only real change is in item 2D to change my title, to update it to what it's currently, what it currently is. Otherwise, no changes.
Any questions for clarification from board members? Thank you. We'll move on to 8.03, the review of school board policy DN, disposal of surplus school property.
The only change here is to add a legal reference, actually, the legal reference that is in the policy itself, which was not previously in the legal references, so we're adding it.
Okay, makes sense. Any questions for clarification on that? Item 8.04 is the revision of school board policy DG, school activity funds.
This is the only one that has substantial changes, and even then, the language is being aligned to the SBA, and although it looks like a lot of words were taken out and added in, it really is saying the same thing. The gist of it is the same, they've just made it less wordy. We also added a cross-reference and legal references.
Thank you. Questions for clarification, Mrs. Henry?
Okay, this, as I'm reading it, it says, "At least once a year by a duly qualified accountant or an accounting firm." In reality, most of the time, it's not going to be done by an accounting firm, it's going to be done by an accountant, perhaps on our payroll of the city? Or is it always going to be done by an accounting firm that comes in and does all of them?
It's done by an external audit firm. Currently, we use Dixon Hughes Goodman.
Okay, we used to not always do that that way.
Yeah, no, we actually go out to RFP for those services.
Okay.
And it is an external firm that does that audit annually.
So the RFP is for 35 school activity funds, it's not for one, and so...
It's for all of them, it's to do division-wise.
So the cost for Phillips Elementary School is not as significant as the cost for Bethel High School?
We actually don't charge it to the schools.
You don't charge it back?
We pay it out of Fund 50.
Okay, thank you.
We have, we can charge it to the schools.
Right, and, but they don't have any money in that account that you're auditing to pay it, so...
We pay it out of Fund 50, we always have.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. 8.05 is the revision of school board policy EFB, free and reduced-priced food services, formerly known as food and nutrition services.
Correct, and that is one of the changes. We changed the title of that one. We are aligning the wording to the SBA, which is really just the tense, and added a legal reference.
Okay, any questions from board members for clarification on this particular revision? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Cott. We are moving into the last phase of our meeting, and that is our informational segment. The school board will hold a governance retreat with the Virginia School Board Association on January 29, 2016, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Old Point National Bank, 101 Queensway. The next regular meeting of this school board will be held on February 3, 2016, at 6:30 p.m. at the Jones Magnet Middle School, right back here. Are there informational items? Dr. Smith, I will start with you.
I'll just say, Madam Chair, again, thank you for the opportunity to present the Look, Listen, and Learn report, and also to say to members of the leadership team that I certainly appreciate their continued support and involvement, and again, thank you. And that concludes any information from the superintendent.
Absolutely, okay, great. Other items of information from board members?
Well, on behalf of the students, we also would like to thank the leadership team, because we see how tirelessly you guys work, and we wouldn't say thank you. In the coming week, as we know, exams are coming up, and Thomas and I plan to go and visit some of our local elementary schools.
Very nice, all right. Thank you, Ciara. We had such a great day today, I just want to share that we did have an opportunity, and I want to give a shout-out to the folks at Phillips Elementary School. We were there this morning early at the dedication of their new breezeway enclosure. Certainly looks fantastic, and they're very excited in their building to have that construction project completed, but it just really is great to see the capital improvement monies and where they go and the outcomes. And so that was a lot of fun to be there and sharing that excitement today. And we also had a great tour of Andrews pre-K through 8 earlier in the day today. And so it's been a busy day for this school board, and it is a busy month, even though our first official meeting was not until the 20th. We've been busy from the time we came back from break, and so lots of great things are going on. If there's nothing further to come before this board, this meeting is adjourned.